Good afternoon, welcome to the 21st Scholarship and Awards Ceremony of the St. Clair County Association of School Boards. My name is Andy Goulet and I'm happy and honored to continue serving as President of the Association. This Association was created in 1966 as an organization for school board members in St. Clair County to be able to get together for school board educational opportunities, networking opportunities, to share experiences and learn from each other and go back and better be able to better serve our home districts. Twenty-one years ago, it was decided that this event would be created to honor students who are looking to go into a career in education, to honor the people, the educators, that have inspired them to want to become educators themselves, and to recognize school board members from around the county. Two years ago, we changed the format of this event. We brought it here to the St. Clair Community College Fine Arts Center, for which we are very thankful for the college to providing it to us, and we also started a new part of our program where we have a keynote speaker. This year's keynote speaker is Nicole McIntyre, who graduated from Yale High School in 1998 and was the student recipient of this award, of the student award from Yale High School that year. She had her mentor, John Presnell, who is with her today, is with her. She in 2009 received the Mentor Award, and so we're happy to have her as our keynote speaker. She has been attended St. Clair County Community College, University of Michigan in Flint. She's graduated with a Bachelor's in Education, ended up with a Master's in Administration from Saginaw Valley State, has taught at the Academic Transitional Academy, and as well as various assignments at Yale High School where she currently teaches 11th and 12th Grade English. And she's a coach, among other things, and she just got done, she is the class advisor this year, and she is taking a very deep breath of relaxation for having prom done last night. Please help me welcome Nicole McIntyre.
Well, I'm so honored to be here today as the keynote speaker for the St. Clair County Association of School Board Awards Event. Thank you, Andy, for the introduction. I'm very humbled to be speaking in front of so many exceptional students, educators, administrators, and board members today. As you know and was mentioned, I am a teacher at Yale High School and I've been teaching there for six years now. And prior to that, I was teaching at the Academic Transitional Academy. So for the past eight years, I've been working in education, and in the world of education, I still consider myself relatively new, so I feel a little bit unqualified to be speaking before so many distinguished people in this field. But I suppose that how long I have been teaching isn't the main focus of my speech today, rather, it is the process of becoming an educator. I was asked to speak today because I sat here at the awards presentation as a student recipient, and I had the honor to be here in a different role as the mentor teacher 11 years later. And now I can stand here and tell you, and particularly the students, my story. It all started by being inspired by a teacher when I was in high school that made my decision to pursue education, and now, as an educator, I strive to inspire others. Education is a rewarding career that often doesn't get the recognition it deserves. However, those teachers that love their job realize it's a process. A process of investing in their students and the return on that investment can create remarkable gains. And one of those remarkable gains is helping to inspire a student to become an educator. I began this process as a student myself 13 years ago, and today, these students begin their own process. When I was a student in high school, I was inspired by a teacher. John Presnell was my social studies teacher, and because of his belief in me and the great role modeling that he gave, I knew that I wanted to become a teacher myself. He told me one day, "Nikki, I think you'd be a great teacher." He probably didn't think much of that little comment that he made, but that comment was the driving force behind my decision to do what I do today. I had been thinking of education as a possible option, I'd been toying with the idea of possibly doing some radio broadcasting, maybe even engineering, but with that one comment, it helped make my decision. His opinion just mattered so much to me. He had made history an exciting subject for me, which necessarily hadn't been my most favorite subject in the past. He even helped guide me to a national history competition in Washington DC. And most importantly, he had a sense of humor, which is, to me, very critical. I admire someone who can laugh at themselves and with you. He also garnered and had given respect. He was just someone I could look up to, someone that I would like to be like. So when I was in high school, I applied for this very same scholarship and chose to honor what he had done for me. And in 1998, I sat as a student at this awards presentation, getting ready to embark on my own educational journey. I went to college and came toward the end of my schooling, and I just had my student teaching to finish, and I was placed at Memphis Junior High with Dwayne Schunk. I also think that was a great opportunity for me. I was coupled with another history teacher who used a sense of humor to teach, and he was very respected. The kids raved about how much they loved him, so I paid close attention yet again to all of the things that he did and made sure that I emulated the strategies that the students liked, and more importantly, learned from. I am sure that students and teachers that are sitting here tonight remember the skills that their teachers used to do that they admired, and I'm sure that they always said, "I am going to use those in my classroom one day, I'm going to make sure that I do that." And so those students that are sitting here today, most likely will do the same, and I'm sure that the teachers that are sitting here today use those strategies that their inspirational teachers gave them. In 2003, I began to put my skills into practice. I was hired to work at the Academic Transitional Academy teaching English. I was very excited to finally have my own classroom and begin doing what I loved. The first year was definitely a learning year for me. I learned a lot about myself, perfecting my teaching skills, learning new teaching techniques, and working with at-risk students. This was a brand-new school at the time, it had just opened, and it was definitely a challenge because I was learning to design new curriculum to engage at-risk students. In 2005, I began working at Yale High School as a special education teacher. This was a definite paradigm shift for me. I learned all the aspects of working with special education students, the laws, the accommodations. It was yet another opportunity to make me a more well-rounded teacher. In 2006, I was then moved to the general education classroom. I was teaching 9th and 11th Grade English. I had now moved from an at-risk to a special education to a general education setting. So I had met some extraordinary students, and I had learned a lot about myself along the way, and I continued to learn as a teacher. In 2009, I had the great privilege of being honored by one of my students, and I sat at this awards presentation in the role of educator. I was honored to have been chosen as a mentor teacher. That moment made me think back to when I was a student honoring my own teacher, and now here I was, the teacher. It made me think back to when I was that eager student waiting to start my own journey. The students that are here today are starting their journeys as well. They are obviously very respected students. They were chosen from many applicants to receive this award. They had to be students that stood out from the crowd and embodied well-rounded individuals. These students have decided that education would be a fulfilling career, and I am sure it's safe to say that any one of you would be exceptional teachers. This is the beginning of a perpetual process. Those of you that are here were influenced by someone, and you chose to recognize that individual today. They did something, said something, encouraged, supported, inspired you. As a student, you look to them for guidance, reassurance, confidence, encouragement. They delivered. You could count on them, you could trust them, you knew you wanted to be like them, a true role model. As a student, you were inspired and now want to teach, and you will work hard, you will achieve this goal, and you will make a difference. And one day, you're going to walk into your very own classrooms, and you're going to say something, you're going to do something, you're going to encourage, support, and inspire one of your own students. And they too will choose to become an educator because of you. One day, you may look back at this very awards presentation, and you may say, "Wow, that was an exciting time for me, and now I'm here, potentially, as a mentor teacher." And that is going to be a remarkable opportunity. And if you get that opportunity, it will only make you realize why you do your job. So it starts with that inspirational teacher, it's passed on to the student, and one day that student can inspire someone else and continue the process. I thought it would be nice to possibly share this moment with the person who started it all for me, so I asked John Presnell to attend today so he could see what he started. So thank you, John, for sharing your talents with me, so that I could share them with my students, and so that one day they could share them with their own students. So thank you, John, please stand so we can hear your hand in the air. And to all the honored educators in this room tonight, thank you for sharing your talents with your students and inspiring them to lead and inspire others as educators. What a legacy you are leaving behind. Let's give them a round of applause. And I don't want to forget the most important element of your success, your parents. There is no question that your family's support, encouragement, nagging, and love helped you get here today. So make sure that tonight when you get home, you give them a big hug and thank them for all that they do for you, and most importantly, sacrifice for you. And to all of the students here tonight, thank you for choosing education as your career. You are choosing a very noble and fulfilling profession, one you should be proud of, one that you will learn from every day. I sat where you are today, and I'm now speaking before you today, as an example of what you can achieve. So congratulations to all of you. You will no doubt make an impact in others' lives one day.
Those are very inspiring words and nice things to say about all of our people here today. We appreciate that. Moving right along to the student and mentor portion of the program. From Algonac, well, let me, before I start that, let me point out that some people are joining me here. This is Karen McHugh from Memphis. She is the Vice President of our association and helps me out over here. And Kim Day, who is sitting over there, who every one of you has received a piece of mail or a phone call or an email from about being here today, and helps kind of put it all together, and we appreciate both of your help. Starting off today, from Algonac, we have Jordan Turner and her mentor, Tracy Stubbs. Jordan's parents are Erica, Eric and Rhonda Turner. Jordan plans to start her post-secondary education close to home at St. Clair County Community College, and she believes that one of her gifts is being a patient person which will serve her well as a teacher working with small children. Since the 4th grade, Jordan has said that she had Mrs. Stubbs three times as a teacher, and every time she became to love and respect her more. Jordan?
I've had Mrs. Stubbs three times as a teacher, as said before. I've had her 4th grade, 5th grade, and then again in 8th grade. And each year, she inspired me in a different way. She always challenged me to do my best and give my all, all the time. She would never let me settle for anything less than my best, and whenever I beat myself up too hard, she always knew how to calm me down and get me back where I needed to be. On top of always being there for me and challenging me to do my best, she was just a fun teacher to be around. She didn't always just teach by the textbooks. She made learning and science fun and cool, and just made it an interesting class to begin. She was very supportive and cared about every single student, and that's something that I would like to be when I become a special education teacher.
From KPEC, Scott Holland and his mentor Cheryl Mara. Scott's parents are Rodney and Carrie Holland. Scott plans to start his post-high school journey at Saginaw University, where he will pursue a degree in special education. Scott chose teaching as his profession because he enjoys the feeling he gets when he helps a child and things, quote, "click in their brain," end quote. Through Ms. Mara's mentoring, Scott says that he now feels he has a level of comfort and confidence for challenges in the future like student teaching.
This year, through St. Clair Community Teachers Exploration Program, I had the privilege to be placed in Ms. Mara's classroom. Ms. Mara's an excellent teacher, and I know that firsthand back in the 3rd grade and now this school year, from observing and interacting with the kids in her classroom. The way she handles the classroom and makes the children want to learn are some things that all teachers should have to make a note of. Ms. Mara gives me the freedom to interact with the kids, it gives me the confidence for my future and what I want to do later. I just hope one day I can be as good of a teacher and mentor as Ms. Mara's been to me. Thank you.
From Marine City High School, Tanya Bickley and her mentor Bert Van Dyke. Tanya plans to pursue a degree in speech pathology and audiology at Western Michigan University. Tanya says that she will relate well to students with special needs, as she has overcome challenges with speech in her sophomore year of high school. Tanya says that her choir teacher since the 8th grade, Mr. Van Dyke's smile and willingness to help his students has most inspired her to enter the field of education. Tanya?
First off, I would just like to say thank you for selecting me as a recipient of the scholarship. Next, I would like to thank Mr. Van Dyke so much. He has influenced me greatly to become a teacher because, you know, as you can hear, that little hiccup, that was my voice problem, and without his help and support, I wouldn't have the confidence that I have today to stand in front of you and speak, or to be onstage and be singing in his class or in a play. And seeing what Mr. Van Dyke has done for me has influenced me to do the same thing for the next generation of students to come. So, Mr. Van Dyke, thank you very much.
From St. Clair High School, Samantha Jebriel and her mentor Lisa Brasky. Samantha's parents are John and Christine Jebriel. Samantha has selected Michigan State University to begin pursuing her career in elementary education. Since elementary school, Samantha has looked forward to going to school every day because she loved her teachers and they made her learning enjoyable. Through the Teacher Exploration Program coordinated by St. Clair County Tech, Samantha met Mrs. Brasky, who models good teaching skills and classroom management.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank Ms. Brasky for being the educator who most influenced my decision to become a teacher. Like he mentioned, I've had the chance this past year to be in her 1st grade class at Gearing Elementary, and seeing the way she can interact with the children really inspires me to want to be that kind of teacher as well. She has a great sense of humor, and I hope that one day I can have the same kind of thing with the kids, so, thanks a lot, Ms. Brasky.
From Marysville, Caitlin Hoffman and her mentor Bonnie Thompson. Caitlin's parents are Robert and Michelle Hoffman. After graduating from Marysville High School, Caitlin plans to attend Northern Michigan University, where she will pursue a major in math and a minor in physics. Having excellent teacher role models and mentors throughout her education, Caitlin realized that she wanted to help and nurture children, just as she had been helped and nurtured, especially in middle school. It was in middle school that Caitlin met Mrs. Thompson, who inspired her to become a math teacher. Caitlin?
First, I'd like to thank Ms. Thompson for coming and being my mentor. She was my math teacher in 7th and 8th grade, and I took an elective math in vendors. And ever since she was my teacher, math has just become a more interesting subject to me, and it drove me to choose it as my major. She always made it interesting, and math sometimes isn't interesting, so, and it's difficult to learn, and she made it way easier on me and helped me with algebra being the base of everything, so, thank you, Ms. Thompson.
She wants to make sure she has hers, because hers is a check. From Memphis, we have Ashley Gaisley and her mentor Elizabeth Phillips. Ashley's parents are Chris and Michelle Gaisley. Ashley's choice for college is Saginaw Valley State University, where she will study secondary English education. Ashley says that even though she struggled for many years due to a learning disability in math, she found solace and inspiration in writing and reading. Through her teacher's reassurance and praise, Ashley was able to reach her potential. One of the teachers who inspired Ashley's goal to become a teacher is Mrs. Elizabeth Phillips.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mrs. Phillips for being such an inspiration every day in my classroom. I had the wonderful opportunity to have her as my 10th grade English teacher, and now again in 12th grade. Every day is just a joy to go in her classroom. She's funny, and she's inspirational, and she makes English come alive every day. Her inspiration and her just passion for English has inspired me to become an English teacher, and I hope someday be just as good as she is. Thank you.
From Port Huron High School, Taylor Johnston and her mentor Tracy Blake. Taylor's parents are Dan and Lisa Johnston. Taylor has not yet settled on her choices of colleges yet. She is considering Michigan State University and Central Michigan University. Taylor's main reason for choosing the education field is that she was inspired by her teachers to do her best in all things. She too would like to inspire her future classroom students. It was Taylor's 1st grade teacher, Mrs. Blake, obvious love of teaching and positive attitude that most influenced her to become a teacher.
Mrs. Blake was my 1st grade teacher. She always had a smile on her face and was extremely helpful, and she always made learning fun, so I hope that when I become a teacher one day, I can inspire kids to learn the way she inspired me.
From Port Huron Northern, Hannah Crone and her mentor Christopher Collins. Hannah's parents are Dennis and Tricia Crone. After graduation, Hannah plans to attend the St. Clair County Community College and then transfer to Northern Michigan University. It was through participation in the Teacher Exploration Program coordinated by St. Clair Tech that Hannah developed a better understanding of how rewarding it can be to change a student's life, outlook on education. Hannah says that Mr. Collins' ability to connect with his students also influenced her decision about teaching as a career.
Out of all my years of schooling, 4th grade definitely stands out for me because of Mr. Collins. He always connected with us, and he always kind of made learning hands-on and very fun. It never really felt like we were learning, so I definitely respect that, so thank you so much, Mr. Collins. And then I would also like to say thank you to the Association of the School Board for awarding me this scholarship.
From Yale, Donald Smesnick and his mentor Maria Gerardi. Donald's parents are Donald and Charlotte Smesnick. Donald has chosen to attend Central Michigan University, where he will pursue a degree in education. Having grown up in a family of educators, Donald says that "teaching is in my blood." In addition to classroom instruction, Donald would like to influence student athletes through coaching. Donald says that his mentor, Maria Gerardi, is not only a phenomenal English teacher, but more important, a great teacher of life lessons. Donald?
I had Ms. Gerardi as my 10th grade English teacher, and she's one of those teachers who's very helpful, kind, and caring, and English really isn't my forte, I guess, and I'm not really good at writing either. And she's helped me a lot throughout the years, whether, when I wasn't even in her class, with homework, especially in English, and writing with essays. And I hope one day that I can make an impact on students like she did with me, so, thank you, Ms. Gerardi.
And from St. Clair County Community College, Scott Seglarak? Seglarak, close. And his mentor David Buzz McNash. Scott's parents are Sue Seglarak and the late David Seglarak. Scott is a graduate of Port Northern High School and also Michigan State University 2008 graduate. He is currently enrolled at SC4 and Saginaw State University. After receiving a degree in advertising from Michigan State University, Scott found himself in a permanent substitute teaching position at Port Huron Schools. It was through this experience that he realized that teaching is something he truly loves and is passionate about. Scott says the teacher who had exemplified love and passion for his work is his political science professor at SC4, David Buzz McNash.
First off, I'd like to thank the St. Clair County Association of School Boards for this great honor. Throughout my educational experiences in life, I've had many teachers that helped influence my decision to be a teacher. Of those, Buzz was the one that stood out the most. Having known Buzz and his family before I took his political science class at SC4, I knew that I'd get a teacher who truly loved his job. As a student, I could tell this is definitely true. I'm a firm believer that if you truly love what you do, you're going to put everything you have into it. This was also true for Buzz. His excitement and passion for teaching was present in every one of his lectures, thus making his class much more enjoyable and educational. Basically, from taking his class and seeing his passion, I knew this teaching would be something I would be interested in. On a personal note, though, Buzz, you're a great guy. I'm glad to know you, and I look to use your inspiration as I pursue my goals. Thanks.
And now moving along to the portion of the program where we introduce school board members from each of the school districts in the county. And Algonac is, what? I'm sorry. Algonac still starts with an A, so that means Mr. Cheryl goes first.
The Algonac Community School is proud to recognize Edward Stanielus as our outstanding school board member. During these very difficult economic times, when schools are under immense pressure to improve their performance, and we are being told to improve our performance with fewer resources, you might ask why anyone would be a school board member. I know over the last couple of years, I've asked why someone might be a superintendent as well. But then I came to the realization that we must focus on our children and re- But then I came to the realization that we must focus on our children and remain optimistic in these difficult times. And Ed Stanielis exemplifies that attitude on our school board. Ed has served on the Algonac Community School Board of Education since 1992. Ed has also earned the MASB Certified Board Member Award. Ed also brings practical experience to his position as a board member. Ed has served as the speech and grant writer at Oakland ISD and he has taught courses for St. Clair Community College. I am very pleased to present Ed with this award.
And I'll now turn the podium over to Superintendent of K-PAC Schools, Mr. Jerry Genix.
Well, it's my privilege to honor a legacy in K-PAC. We have an opportunity as school board members to recognize those who've gone before us and paved the way. And the young lady that we're recognizing today, Mrs. Audrey Markwart, certainly epitomizes the importance of education. She served two terms during the 80s and the 90s and as well as serving two terms, she graduated six young people through K-PAC Community Schools. And her family emphasized education to the point where they went on and got college degrees. She was just telling me that one of her daughters was recently honored, she works for 3M but was honored by NASA. She's got teachers in her family as her children. So, in K-PAC this year, we have the opportunity to recognize one of those who's gone before us, brought us through to some of the hard times that Mike was talking about, but it's a real privilege for us to recognize as our distinguished board member, Mrs. Audrey Markwart. And I'd like to introduce Dr. Rodney Green from East China.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to be here today and introduce our distinguished board member. His name is Jim Bewer. Jim has been on the board at East China since 1996 and whether it's been helping out with our Millage Campaigns, bond issues over the years, or being on the board for our foundation and being the chef for our Wild Game Dinner, Jim has always stepped up and done everything that a board member should do and being a great board member. So, I would like to recognize him today as our outstanding board member for East China School District, Jim Bewer.
And I would like to announce Jamie Kane to come to the podium, Superintendent at Marysville Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Green. It's a pleasure to be here today. Mr. Kevin Palmetier cannot be here today and I think that we all know that being a board member is an act of service and it's also a matter of juggling family commitments with professional commitments. And Mr. Palmetier did have a commitment today and wasn't able to be here. When we think about what Mr. Palmetier represents for Marysville Public Schools, colleagues have used the words "fair," "honest," "respected," "dedicated," and "committed to excellence." These are just a few of the words that have been used to describe him and his service not only on the Board of Education, but as a member of the community. He has served the school district and the community of Marysville as a Board of Education member since 2001. He served on many committees, he held the position of Vice President, and he most recently stepped into the role of Board President this past year. Mr. Palmetier has not backed away from challenge, rather, he has answered the call to lead a Board of Education in very difficult and challenging times. When the need for a new Board President emerged last year, Kevin stepped forward. When the district was faced with replacing a respected and highly successful superintendent mid-school year, Kevin stepped forward to lead the process. I've had the privilege as a new superintendent and honor to build a relationship with Mr. Palmetier over the last five months. And as a new superintendent, I can tell you I'm very thankful for the time, commitment, and support Kevin has provided to me. No matter how bleak the news, Kevin always finds a way to look at things from a balanced, calm perspective and a sense of humor often cuts through the tension of a difficult conversation. It is truly my pleasure to accept this award on behalf of Mr. Kevin Palmetier.
And I'd like to introduce Superintendent of Schools for Memphis, Mr. Frank Johnson.
Thanks, Jamie. Memphis Community Schools are proud to honor Mr. Cliff Rumbelski as their 2011 Outstanding Board of Education Member. Mr. Rumbelski has been a Memphis Board of Education Member for the past three years. Currently, he serves as Board Treasurer and is a member of the Finance, Policy and Grievance and Extracurricular Committees. Cliff has distinguished himself as part of a strong board that has shown outstanding ability to provide wisdom, consistency, caring, and compassion during difficult times. Because Mr. Rumbelski and his colleagues on the board, Memphis schools continue to provide outstanding programs and education for their students. In addition to his duties on the board, Cliff assists with many student activities. He helps with sports of every season by teaching, monitoring, and working events and is visible and available to staff and parents. During the winter season, Mr. Rumbelski served as assistant coach to the girls' league champion basketball team. In his decision-making on the board, Mr. Rumbelski is thoughtful, fair, and puts the best interests of students first. Cliff is parent of two Memphis students, Mackenzie, 8th grade, and Taylor, who is a senior. On behalf of the students, staff, and community, I want to thank Cliff Rumbelski for his willingness to get involved with and his support at Memphis Community Schools. I'd like to introduce Ron Willeen from Port Huron.
Thank you, Frank. I can say a lot about Jeff Stout, but first and foremost, he's a family man. He has a wonderful wife that works in our district. He has two daughters, Mickey and Casey, and three grandchildren. But it certainly gives me a great pleasure to announce Jeff Stout, our outstanding board member for the Port Huron Area School District. There's a saying, "Strong leaders rise to the top," and Jeff Stout is no exception to this saying. His chosen career was a firefighter for 29 years. Jeff was promoted to Lieutenant, Captain, Assistant Chief, and over the 29 years as a firefighter, Jeff put out a lot of fires. And as Board President, Jeff continues to put out a lot of fires. This is my first year as superintendent and I could not have a better person in the position of Board President than Jeff. We all know we're going through probably one of the most difficult times in the state, this county, and our school districts. I've never experienced this in my career. And Jeff having his leadership over 11 years as a board member and now as President of the Board is absolutely amazing. His long history of leadership in this district was crucial to my transition as a brand-new superintendent. What I like about Jeff, he truly cares about the students and their future. And another thing, he's not afraid to do the right thing. He's always willing and ready to help the public and he certainly is the epitome of truly what a public servant is, who gives countless hours to the community through the position he holds as a board member. Without any doubt, Mr. Jeff Stout is the right person to lead this district at this time and I couldn't be happier to give him this award today. Let's give him a nice round of applause.
And now it's my privilege to introduce Ken Nichol, Superintendent of Yale.
As a first-year superintendent, I'm appreciative of the opportunity to be batting cleanup in the presentations. And in this case, the alphabet really suits us, being Yale. Terry Hoist is our outstanding school member and I'm very, very pleased to be the one presenting him this award because the primary word that probably details and describes him is "dedicated." He's dedicated to God, to his church, to his family, to the community, and to his country. Terry has served in the capacity of board member for Yale Public Schools for seven years and this would be a great opportunity to put a shameless plug for him. On Tuesday, May 3rd, he'll be up for reelection. Terry has served in many capacities while on the Board of Education and currently as Board President. I'm very thankful for Terry's leadership. As a first-year superintendent, Terry has provided outstanding mentorship and guidance for me. And so as we move together, I'm very thankful that he's there. Terry serves the country in the United States Army as an electrical engineer. He's not only intelligent, he's grounded, he's pensive, and he's an outstanding advocate for kids. I'm very pleased to give Terry the St. Clair County Association of School Boards Award.
I'm Kevin Pollak. I'm the president at SC4 here. Just before I laud Diana Maxwell, our Board Member of the Year, as an educator myself, I'd have to talk to all the students that were here real quick. You don't know how long it takes and how far, as well as teachers, your touch goes. On a personal note, when I finished my doctoral degree at Michigan State and I had a PhD, the first thing I did was I wrote to my 5th grade teacher and my 7th grade teacher who influenced me the most. And I got letters back from both of them saying that it meant an awful lot from someone to think back that far. To Nicole, on the other hand, when you mentioned that sometimes it seems like you're the new person all the time and do you really fit in? When I finished my PhD at Michigan State, my wife began to introduce me as the doctor, but not really the useful kind. So, you're always striving to make yourself fit in somehow. Diana, I'm starting to think that for a while, it looked like it was like a spelling bee and we were going to win. I think we came a little close, but not quite there. Diana Maxwell has been on the Board of Trustees for six years at St. Clair County Community College and has done an amazing, outstanding job during the time that she's been there. She has served as Vice Chair. She's deeply involved in creating a Tom Hamilton Scholarship where she spent a tremendous amount of time in the last year raising funds to help our students through that scholarship. She's very enthusiastic. I can tell you by all the phone calls I get all the time from her. Hey, I have an idea. Have we thought of this? Yes, we have, Diana. It's okay. However, those ideas are always have a grain of something that we really need to latch on to. And so, I actually look forward to hearing from her because there are things that Diana will pick up on that we have not noticed. And it's important that we look at all the different angles and more often than not, everything that she brings to the table really is something we should be examining in a lot more detail. Again, her most important contribution, I think, to the board is her enthusiasm, her willingness to become involved. She's attended national conferences and state conferences, always bringing back a new idea or questioning why are we doing what we're doing, which is important for all of us to continually question ourselves. So, with that, it really gives me great pleasure to tell you also that Diana was nominated by our staff and faculty. This award was 100% given by the people that work at the college, which should mean more to you because it really tells you that what the people in the college think about you as a whole. So, please welcome me and Diana Maxwell as our Board Member of the Year.
And now to help with the portion of the program where we recognize Academy Board Members, Charlie Johnston.
Thank you, Andy. I would be remiss, though, if I didn't take an opportunity to speak on behalf of Mr. Dan Degrow, who was unable to be here today, recognizing Mr. Mark Campbell, who was also unable to be with us today. But Mr. Campbell, as many of you know, spent a number of years as a trustee on the Port Huron Area School District Board of Education. He has, in the past, served as a trustee on Interinformational Technology Academy at one of the smaller academies that was at one time chartered by St. Clair RISA. And he's currently serving as a member of the St. Clair County RISA Board of Education. So, there's truly a gentleman who's dedicated at dozens and dozens of years of his life to education in St. Clair County at a variety of levels. And if you have the opportunity to say thank you to Mr. Campbell sometime in the future, please pass my personal and my professional note of appreciation to him. I have the opportunity to introduce three of our Academy Board Members that are with us this afternoon. Gordy and Terrell and Kathy, if you could join me right up here in the front, we'll take an opportunity to not only recognize them and their work, but a little announcement about the academies that St. Clair County RISA has chartered. There's not another intermediate school district or RISA in the state of Michigan that charters and is creative in their unique educational opportunities for young people in St. Clair County. Mr. Jamison is a member of the Academic Transitional Academy Board of Education. As you know, that district, excuse me, that school serves districts throughout St. Clair County with at-risk 9th and 10th grade students. Terrell Wallace, a member of the Blue Water Learning Academy, which is one of the very few strict-disciplined academies in the state. The students that attend the Blue Water Learning Academy are those youngsters who have, in one way or another, have come to a crisis in their educational pursuit of an education and the Blue Water Learning Academy provides a great alternative to many students, not only from the school districts in St. Clair County, but on occasion from McComb County as well. Kathy Kish. Kathy has stepped into one of the most creative Boards of Education in the state of Michigan. She's a member of the Virtual Learning Academy. This was chartered just about a year and a half ago. These students, again, are challenging students. They've either been expelled, suspended, or they've dropped out of school for whatever reason. They come from homes that have very, very little parental support on occasion, but on other occasions, they come from homes that have tremendous parental support, mirroring the parents that are with us today, supporting your children. The Virtual Learning Academy has started out, hopefully, they were going to start out with a target of about 90 students. Today, they have over 130 students. They'll be moving into a new facility or a new-to-them facility this coming fall and it won't be long before there'll be 200 students taking all of their, virtually all of their instruction online, using cutting-edge technology, and earning their diploma and moving on to their next educational level. So, we really do appreciate the academies that serve over 900 students in St. Clair County and we couldn't make it possible without the support of men and women like the recipients of today's recognition. Thank you very much.
A long time ago, the Michigan Association of School Boards used to do their own regional meetings where they did awards for school board members that attained various levels of education and certification through the Michigan Association of School Boards. And in recent years, MASB has decided that it would be beneficial for those school board members to be recognized at their local award ceremonies such as this one. And so, to help us with that today, from Michigan Association of School Boards is Kathy Hayes, the Executive Director of the Michigan Association of School Boards.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Good afternoon, everybody, and thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I enjoyed my two-hour drive from the Lansing area. It was a great Sunday afternoon drive for me. I have the pleasure tonight, this afternoon, of acknowledging two board members, both of them from the K-PAC School District, who have spent countless hours working on their own professional development. It's a wonderful thing for me to see the acknowledgement that this county does for their board members. I certainly enjoyed some of the presentations today. But this is about two board members who have given up some of their very precious time to attend classes and also to come to conferences or workshops. So, we definitely like to acknowledge those board members, especially after they've achieved a certain level of certification. And today, we're going to honor Barry Gilleski from K-PAC Community Schools with the Level 1 Certification. Is Barry here today? There he is. Oh, there's Jerry. Please, congratulations for us. And, from the Marysville Public Schools, Dennis, Dennis Socia, from, he received the Award of Merit, which is our second level of certification. Thank you again, and congratulations again to our award recipients.
Thank you, Kathy. And thank you for, all of you, for coming out today and witnessing this program, which year after year continues to bring just very powerful comments and feelings of inspiration from all the various participants. Like to say a few thank yous here. First, to Nicole McIntyre for coming back and talking to us again and bringing her mentor John with her, we appreciate that, thank you. And a special appreciation to St. Clair County RISA and their recording today's events. You will be able to, when they get it all tweaked and fine-tuned, you'll be able to get to it, a presentation, the video of this on the RISA's website, and we encourage you to do that, and we'll make sure people know about that. To the Communication Office at RISA for doing the certificates and programs and all the written materials that you've received. And, you may have noticed lightning over here, but it really wasn't lightning, it was Rose Norton, who for the second year has graciously and voluntarily provided the photographic services that we've received for this program today. Special thank you to Rose. Thank you to Karen McHugh for helping me out up here, and once again to Kim Day for all that she does and being the glue that holds this whole thing together, and if it wasn't for her, we, we'd all be lost someplace, who knows? We appreciate you coming out. There'll be refreshments served right outside the doors here when we depart from here, which will be as soon as I say. Enjoy yourselves and have a safe trip home.